...in this weather. Now, it's funny, I ran a Catholic school in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and the range, torrential rains, were like snow blizzards back then. And schools would have closed, and people couldn't get through. But, you know, when it came to really important things, people did not. Even though the rains were, and the flooding was incredible. We, you know, have to commend all of you. Thank you, all of you, for being here tonight. One of the wonderful things about being part of City Council is that we get to really be at the cutting edge of some of the major things that are happening in this community. And I realize too, that it truly is an honor to be a part of what happens with the city. And that's why we welcome everything and everyone and your comments. And this is why we hopefully welcome it the way we do. And just a couple of reminders. Our meeting today, as you know, requires that if you want to speak at the Good and Well Press, they do sign up during the meeting. And try to take your name in on the form here before the meeting, before the City Council meeting is over. And as you probably know, as you notice, I'm still doing video over from home lately, and both my wife and I have been out on the holiday. But we're back. So we see quite few of us, and we're happy to see everyone out here today. And again, just another reminder that we have a two-minute limit, so we can hear from everyone. Our job is to hear from you. Our job is to take in what it is that you have to say in terms, and to, of course, incorporate this into policy and legislative acts that we can do. And another thing that's important to remember is that we may not be able to answer every question you have, but certainly we will look into concern, and we will get back to you. And that's one of the wonderful things about holding a City Council meeting like this. And with that, I'm going to turn our meeting over to Mr. President.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, January 17, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Number local, Councilmember Van Del.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Roman.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
At the regularly dedicated venue, City Council, the Attorney and Assistant Corporation Council, Ray Calviti will have a salute to the flag.
Mr. Van Del, would you lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as a true republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to everyone. It's good to see folks out tonight. And with that, I'm going to ask our City Manager to give us our update of what's going on during the City meeting.
Okay. The City Court's Office announced that 2017 resident parking permits are on sale. Purports may be purchased at the Court's Office on the third floor, Monday to Friday, 9:05 or by mail. The city is continuing to work through the comprehensive planning process. The plan's been updated in response to public feedback, which includes the consideration of all comments heard over the past two years, from all outreach methods, via surveys, meetings, emails, phone calls, et cetera. The draft plan is available for download at longbeachny.gov, also longbeachlistings.com, with a record hard copy also available for viewing at the Court's Office on the third floor, the Long Beach Library, the Grand Desk, the Housing Authority meeting office, and the Mark Luther King Center. Let's all take a moment to congratulate Long Beach resident Charlie McAvoy in honor of his big gold medal win, part of Team USA, along with being a player of the game in the World Junior Hockey Challenge on January 5, 2017. Congratulations, Charlie. The city experienced first snowstorm of 2017 on January 9. As always, all the force crews did a tremendous job working all day through the roads, continuing the night despite some, a little more intense expected snowfall and extremely low temperatures. Thank you again to the dedicated men and women of CSCA for all of your hard work every day. Also, the Department of Unexpected, good news. The, we're hearing and seeing that the Army Corps of Engineers project is ahead of schedule, and want to make sure that we, as a city, continue to work with them to make sure that there is no impact to our summer season. It's a rare, this project like this is ahead of schedule. Carryout bag charge coming up, new for 2017. City's carryout bags will take effect April 22, Thursday. In the past few weeks, the City members of the Environmental Analysis Board have visited Long Beach High School and Middle School, informed students about the ordinance, and will continue our educational outreach come weeks, encouraging everyone to get in the habit now and bring their heavy-use bags when shopping in Long Beach. The City of Long Beach is also proud and partner with Food and Serve to offer an Ocean Skills and Safety Class for children ages 6 to 60, beginning with January 8. This class is designed for any participant who wants to dramatically boost their ocean ability level, and meets Sunday evenings, 5:30 to 6:45. Program supervised by Beth Day Scoot and the Long Beach Food and Serve instructors is intended for strong swimmers to control deep water. Exercise the drills assigned to be fun and attractive, teaching students skills that will benefit them throughout a lifetime of ocean-based activity, including surfing, paddleboarding, and open ocean swimming. City of Long Beach was featured again by HGTV. Our City by the Sea played a starring role in the January 15 episode of Trading Skyline for Shoreline of City's Island Life. Featured was Long Beach-owned Realtor Barbara Malady of Century 21 Homes, who guided Danielle, a Manhattan schoolteacher, in her search to find her dream home in our community. The city held its first ever Martin Luther King Day celebration here on the sixth floor of City Hall yesterday at 10:00 a.m. Had a great turnout, which thanked everyone who participated, and Councilwoman Moore for spearheading the effort, including the winner of our inaugural SA contest. As always, the city also participated in the Martin Luther King Day March, which began at 11:30 a.m. on Long Island Boulevard, and ended with a parade ceremony at the Martin Luther King Center. City is expected to partner with Opportunities on Island to host a informative discussion on their pre-apprenticeship training program. Opportunities on Island's free intensive 240-hour training program, which includes Ocean 10 Blueprint reading, and much more to help you prepare for careers in the building construction trades of Nassau Substate Building Trades. This information session will be held at the Martin Luther King Center on Thursday, January 19, from 10 to 1:00. Please view the flyer for more information. The State of Long Island, collaboration with the city, will be hosting additional one-on-one-style small business mentoring sessions designed to provide personalized assistance to small businesses and aspiring entrepreneurs. Third session will be held January 24, 6 to 8, at the library, and fourth session scheduled February 15, 10 to 12, at the Long Beach Bell Learning Center. And you can RSVP online, well, I think the link is on our website instead. I don't think it's worth reading, but it will be complicated. It's on our website. Looking ahead to next month, on Saturday, February 4, the annual sale of Play Prizes will take place on the boardwalk. And on Super Bowl Sunday, February 5, the Long Beach Polymiers will make their annual pledge of recital guard with proceeds in favor of Make-A-Wish. Visit longbeachpolymiers.org for more details. Hello, George, taking my sixth annual pledge.
Just a fair question. Jack, some people have asked, and said I would inquire, just to make sure that the process for departments, boards, and commissions is moving ahead, because we have the PTA as interviews, and how we move forward.
For the City Council?
No, for commissions and boards.
Oh, oh, oh. I think we, as we probably stated at the last Council meeting, yes, we are receiving folks' information, and we are supposed to keep sending it, as we can really have received general volume amount, and we look forward to moving that process ahead, and particularly for those that require council vote, for that to be moving after the council plans are put in place.
Yeah, I just want to make a very brief mention of how impressive the day was yesterday, where we celebrated the contribution of this great American that has been part of our history in most of our lifetime. Some of us have been impacted more than others over the kind of importance of the message and value that had brought about by Dr. Martin Luther King. I want to commend here publicly Lisa Moore for reference yesterday to bring this to our community, not just one, but the entire community of Long Beach. And this is something that Dr. Martin Luther King was truly, was his dream. And I have to say, and I've said this over and over again since I've been on City Council, it was 1968 where I'd received a Martin Luther King scholarship to go to four years at Stony Brook, and I would not be here today if it wasn't for what a great contribution of this man in my personal life is. So, and now this marks the 43rd year that I am in public service, and if it weren't for this great man, I don't know where I'd be today. Again, and I want to thank you again, and more, thank you for the work of this man.
Thank you, President Torres. We congratulate you, and we want to be real and special.
Thank you.
Once again, just acknowledge Sharon James for her work with respect to community development and making the city a success, a success. We thank you, Sharon.
Okay, with that, folks, if there are any other comments from the City Council, we're going to go ahead and begin our meeting. Mr. President?
First item is resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with servicing and maintenance of five passenger elevators from the lowest responsible dealer.
Okay, the current contract is expiring. The city agreed this contract, and in fact, for the city, the lowest pricing available for this service.
That's important. I know that for a long time, we've had some of the elevators not working here, and thank God we had at least always one. But this company that's coming in will, and I wonder if our Commissioner would like to make any kind of comment on that? I know that the company that we have, if you could tell us a little bit more about this contract, or did you bid this contract? Welcome, Mr. Miranda.
Good to see you. Can you also just address, it's a different company now, and do we expect better service? Have you had issues from the past?
This is a different company. We received two bids, one from the company that was doing it for the last five years, and from a new company who we met with and checked their references. And I think the most important thing about the new company that we're taking on into the city is that they service about 15 or 16 of the buildings right here in the area. With the other company, it was happening, we had different service people, each line coming in to repair the elevators, so it was always like two steps backwards and a step forward. So a lot of companies only four or five times. They increased their price from last year about five or six fold, because they realized that this was spending way too much time. We will have the same service people with this company here that service Long Beach, and we get the recommendations from those buildings. So we'll have people here that'll be close by, and we'll have the safety, which is really important. So I think the contract will go very well.
So it's going to cost us $21,300 a year, correct, for this contract? And they will make in full five copies?
That's correct.
How much parts?
Parts, and service, and inspection, annual inspections are required, monthly service on the elevators, fluids that have to be put on the various elevators. In addition, we did add a clause, this contract, that will allow us to make minor capital improvements using the same company. So when there's something that's beyond maintenance item, that's just a simple repair, they will be able to price down for us and make a more permanent repair when it's an equipment failure that needs to be replaced. So I think this contract's going to work out very well. Myself and Joe, with the other Bethany Commissioner, met with the service people that were actually doing the services as well as the City Manager, and we were quite pleased with their knowledge of our elevators.
Okay. Are there any comments from the Council? Any comments from the public on this item number one, the maintenance contract for the elevators here? Okay? Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Good to have you here. And I want to acknowledge in the audience, I just realized, the lady that's there, that we have the presence of legislator Ford. I just realized it. Welcome. Good to have you. Okay, and we'll move on to our next item.
I am sure this resolution will authorize publication preparing of the ordinance to bend code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding building code. The science publication only, attorney will be held February 7, p.m. I am sure this resolution will authorize publication preparing of the ordinance to bend code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding fire prevention and protection. The science publication only, attorney will be held February 7.
I am sure this resolution will authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract for the servicing and maintenance of five passenger elevators from the lowest responsible dealer. Just move the options from this item.
I'll let you decide.
Second?
Hello? That's from the Van Del.
Yes.
Not from the Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Roman?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
I am sure this resolution will authorize publication preparing of the ordinance to bend code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding building code.
Just move the options from this item.
Second? That's from the Van Del.
Yes.
She, not from the Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Roman?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
I am sure this resolution will authorize publication preparing of the ordinance to bend code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding fire prevention and protection.
Just move the options from this item.
Second? That's from the Van Del.
Yes.
Vice President Roman?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
Do you have a motion for a review?
I have a motion.
Second?
I want...
That's from the Van Del.
Yes.
That's from the Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Roman?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
Folks, now we are beginning our Good and Well Press section of the meeting tonight. And again, welcome, your comments. Again, just as a reminder, we have a two-minute limit on the comments. And again, please be aware that we may not be able to answer all the questions prepared this week. I may not have the information, maybe for legal reasons, but we certainly want to hear from everyone. And again, we want to welcome Mr. Deesport, and we're honored to have you.
I know, thank you for the introduction. I would have been delighted, except, you know, with your earlance, I would have been able to get something from Starbucks, I suppose.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, I have two. I'm going to quickly read this one letter, read it to the right here. Dear City Manager Schneer, I believe you might have gotten this out today. It has come to my intention that the owners of the various concession stands on the boardwalk address the city to renegotiate their leases to allow them to apply for their licenses. While this decision will ultimately be made by the city administration, the residents should have an opportunity to hear the pros and cons of this proposal. There should be public hearings held, as these establishments are located on the City of Long Beach property, and the costs and benefits should be discussed in open forums. I have heard from residents who are undecided in this issue, and I have found that many of my neighbors are not even aware of this proposed change. I know that I have many questions concerning this, and would like to have a clear understanding of the impact, if any, on the boardwalk in the beach. The city held many public forums to get input from residents on whether to apply on the boardwalk. You listened to them then, and I urge you to reach out and listen to them once again. My other letter is this, and I sent this a while ago. They'd like to send a couple, if you want to hand to the City Council people, if I can bring them up. Dear City Manager Schneer, I am reaching out to you on behalf of two disabled veterans who have requested handicap parking in front of or near the residence. Both Chris Donald Sonnigard and Phil Salala live in the West End and have for many months attempted to get these accessible spaces, but have met with resistance through the city administration. I understand Long Beach has a policy that only wheelchair use is granted in street-side accommodations, but I believe this to be an arbitrary policy that is in contrast with other municipalities throughout the state. I feel that any wheelchair use, such as wheelchair walk-up, oxygen, or prosthetic, and severely disabled, should be granted recombination. This also might be that there are in fact accessible on-street spaces that are granted to others not wheelchairs, yet the requests being of these two men that proudly serve our country are being more than mine. I would like an explanation as to why this decision has to be made. Also, please provide my office a printed copy of the City of Long Beach data policy regarding such a request for accommodation, and the date such policy was enacted. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. I thank you for your attention and cooperation. I look forward to hearing from you. So City Manager, I did write a little while ago, and when I came to the last City Council meeting, you did indicate to some of the other speakers that it's best that you write and recommend to us. So I'm hoping on behalf of these two veterans, that both you and the City Council can come up with a solution and a resolution, because I think all these gentlemen deserve the respect for what they have done and how they've served the benefit of our country.
I would just mention that I've asked the police to have another look at the issue and see what they can work out, while making sure they stay within the ADA laws. I think we would all agree that they can work out from the comments.
And I understand that, and I know sometimes we always have to follow the rules, you know, set forth the naturalities, and we do, you know, promise that we're going to follow the rules. But sometimes, you know, exceptions can be made, especially when it's for a very worthy cause, and I think these two gentlemen deserve the respect, and maybe some accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Certainly. You're certainly very welcome here, and we appreciate you for such important notices to us.
Thank you.
And rest assured that we have been looking into, and you know, there have been issues that are not work, very complicated, but again, you're absolutely right. These are our best. My, and I have to tell you this, that my son-in-law knows this situation very well, and we've been working on it, both telling to the police commissioner, and I know that there are codes that we had to adhere to, that are common, but you're absolutely right. We should be able to do something for our vets that have given so much for our community and community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for being here. Next person is Mr. Dan...
McPhee.
McPhee, sorry. Commander, thank you for being here. I'm sorry I couldn't read your name very well, but I did see that you were present. And welcome to the City Council.
All right. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Tony. I don't mean to be repetitious, but I'm here for the same purposes as Mr. Ford. When I came in here tonight, we all stood up and we took the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. These two Korean Marines fought over that flag. And I've been here several times, speaking to several members of, including yourself, about this issue with these two men. I've gone to the police department, I presented the pictures, and wrote doctor's letters, you know, and both men suffering from neuropathy, as well as specifically also suffering from cancer. And it's just too hard for them to get around, you know, and wouldn't be here asking if it wasn't, I believe it was necessary. The VFW of Long Beach, as we have over 450 members, and we also now have taken into our custody the Grandell, the Beach Terrace, the Park Avenue, and the Long Beach City Living, as well as the Nordless Hotel in Atlantic Beach, which have all, many veterans, there are over 100 of them. They all receive newsletters from the VFW, and this is a big issue with them also, because they're elderly for the most part. And as we all know, when you get older, things don't work as well as they did when you were younger. I've spoken to Mr. Schneer about this, and I've spoken to Mike Watson about this, and I know that everything takes time. But you know, if it takes too much time, it isn't going to do much good for these gentlemen, all right? They need it now. We saw the weather out here last week, it smelled nice on the ground, and when the summertime comes here, it's just as bad for us, everybody's going to be pissed, and won't be able to park, and they have to do it all. So we can get this done, I understand it's not a spot for them, but a spot they may be able to utilize to get at least in and out of their residence. They've been here for many, many years. The Sonnigard family was, they were born here. He's in his eighties, the Sonnigards are here a long time. So I appreciate any help that you can give us, and I know that the City of Long Beach is very, very compassionate, friendly to the VFW, and we do appreciate it, but in this issue, time is of the essence, and I wish that we could resolve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, I mean, we feel bad that, you know, all these complications we've had. I personally know these two gentlemen, and I feel terrible that we have not been able to come to, because of the technicalities. We need to be able to get through this. You're absolutely right. These two people have given so much for us, and I assure you that it will not fall on deaf ears, it will continue. But, you know, we've heard that from you over and over again, and we need to do something. Mr. Mayor, thank you for being here today. Oh, we have Ms. Belasavich. Mary Belasavich, you here?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I'm doing this.
That's all right. I'm fast.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Yes. Okay. I have, our next person is Mr. Michael Delurie. Am I pronouncing that correctly? I mess up with names all the time, so you'll have to excuse me, because, you know, all my life, I've messed up with my name, and I don't know why, maybe it's psychological, but, but welcome, sir. Good to see you here tonight.
Good to be here tonight, Council. I'm just going to read the bullet points. We'll sit down, and then possibly we could address one, or some, or all of the issues. Beach Park record ticket exchanges. Looking for some random information or a general synopsis of how the beach park seasoned went this past year. The second is about parking. The details you could look at. It's in an area, a newly opened restaurant. We hope it flourishes, we hope it's successful, we want it to be successful. Hand in hand with that issue is, in the news that day, you'll see outdoor dining. It's an issue with my talk. I don't know if we have any, it's basically a common sense approach, I think. People really should just allow tables not to be placed on sidewalks or their sidewalks, but that's just a general point. Toro Law School, the review will come, as always, we're next thing. Potential candidates, where we are. If you're allowed to discuss it at all, I don't know. Pride Weekend, June 9th, any new picks on that? And that will be it. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Thank you so much. You know, it's amazing, and I'm so glad you brought this question up. We encourage businesses, and we encourage folks who invest in Long Beach. I happen to be temporarily living right by West, well, I'm on West Womack, and we encourage businesses, I think it's no question why. I think in the parking lot that we posted holds approximately 150 cars. The restaurant holds close to 300 people. And I remember three full nights in a row where, for a radius of four blocks, I could not find parking, and it was very difficult. So I sympathize, unbelievably. We were hoping, but I also have to say that when I first came to Long Beach in 1965, and I visited my social studies teacher in the west, there was no parking back then either. And so it's always been an issue that has been a very difficult thing to deal with, but we appreciate what you're bringing up, and the fact that you're bringing this up and writing to us, too, because this is so important, because it does represent what a lot of people feel, and the frustration.
There's a positive solution, but I just don't know.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you. And, you know, as far as some of the other things, too, we've had so many very, very qualified people apply for City Council, and it's amazing, and we're so impressed by it. Makes it that much more difficult to make the decision. We wish we could have been able to make the decision by now, but it is, we have, we're going through the actual tedious interview process now of one by one of the finalists. So we're not ready. And thank you so much, because we're as concerned as you are about that, too. And again, thank you, Mr. Delurie, thank you for coming in and sharing all of these things for us, and it will not fall on deaf ears, we will try as much as we can to resolve these things.
Mr. Torres, can someone speak with respect to the Toro Law School update, and also if the residents can have an update with respect to Pride Weekend? Because this was a question, maybe a month ago, several residents asked the question, so if we can have an update at this time, I think it's time to report it.
The Toro Law School process... Toro Law School process, I believe, is kicking off shortly with planning phases that this comes on heels of the progress of plan, progress of plan process and Pride Weekend, whichever is June 10th, has a planning process underway with our security consultants and that has been going on for some time. And I'm sure if there's specific updates or calendar items, I believe it certainly will be.
And will the city organizations have updates, will there be some information or any dialogue with the city organizations with respect to Pride Weekend?
Pride Weekend, I'm sure before June, that it would be as well for.
Good question. Thank you, thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, Mr. Delurie, thank you again, thank you again for this, very important. Our next person is Mr. Jenny Grebes. Good to see you. Jenny, this is more than close to 40 years ago, but welcome Jenny, good to see you. And I learn English too, you speak so well. Welcome back to the council, Jenny.
I still, I am here because there's still the cold shower at the recreation center. Still, it's not working.
I'm sorry.
I was here five months ago and they promised me that was going to be right by five days and then.
Jenny, I'm so sorry that that still is going on. I wonder if, if our commissioner is aware of what this took place before he came, Mr. Miranda? And he.
No, this isn't a public, I'm just, it's not a public conversation, the recreation center. I asked him about this and they advised me that there would be, I said, can't you just make the shower cold?
Yeah.
Do it, but behind the shower cold. And apparently they were going to be installing something that will hold down the shower to be a solely cold shower, but it costs approximately $2,000 and we began to do it.
Okay, so that's the update we have, that's.
I was about to have to say, you know, about two weeks ago.
Okay. It's taking a long time, Jenny, sorry, and I do realize that. We should have cold water, you know, it usually is the problem with warm hot water, it's cold water that we need for your authorities and we, and we know that that's important too. Jenny, we're sorry that that hasn't happened yet.
Thank you. I have another issue, a new issue, I live in the, on Shore Road, at the beginning of Shore Road and on Shore. Right in the corner, the light post is, you know, it's not working. It's so dark.
Oh, the, the. Yes, yes.
Really, how dark.
I don't know if you've reported that issue or not, but I know that our public works commissioner is here and he'll make sure that that's reported incidentally already.
I don't know.
He's going to wave his hand and.
There he is, it's Mr. Miranda with the issue. And he's new and, you know, we have issues with contractors for these lights and that's been a problem, it's been a problem in various parts of the city and it's something that we're working on right now.
You can also report that, I don't know if you, the cities have, you can report that anytime using our app as well.
Thank you so much for this.
And it's good to see you again, we're sorry that that hasn't happened.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. Okay, oh my goodness, this is, is Karen Adama? How are you? Welcome, Karen.
Karen Adama, 74 Borris Street. Happy New Year to everyone and I can't believe it's January 17th already, this month's already on its way out. I too have been out of blue because I've had the same thing that's going around town, the same cough and head cold. So my, my question was also about the new city council member and how is the process going and you already answered that, so thank you. I was going to congratulate whomever it was and I'll keep my remarks and pull my remarks till then. Okay?
Thank you, good to see you, thank you so much, thank you so much. You know, it's something that's on everyone's mind and we too are concerned. Our next person, very welcome to be here also, is Mr. Sean Sullivan. Welcome, Mr. Sullivan, good to see you, I've seen you and your wife since the summertime and we're glad you're here.
Sean Sullivan, I'm from the East Oldham Cafe, I'm speaking on behalf of the concessionaires on the boardwalk. We sent this letter out to you guys, we just wanted to get it on the record. Dear Mr. Schneer and the council members, after much, much discussion regarding the possibility of concessions obtaining New York State SLA licenses, boardwalk concessionaires would like to respond to the letter sent by LBIware. We attended the Long Beach Aware Meeting on January 4th, 2017. We felt that the coalition would potentially benefit from hearing a different perspective on the proposed changes to concession basis. We presented the coalition with the list of restrictions that the business owners suggested to the city for the revised concession policy. Policies listed below seek to target the biggest concerns and problem scenarios that the coalition works so hard to combat. So we suggested that, that we restrict the beverage service to 23 and older and our feeling was that we would knock out the possibility of big ideas by, by doing so. Maintaining the restricted hours of operation can be in closing time, security guards can maintain safety, no outdoor alcohol signage or advertising, beverage specific cups, no bottles of glass, signage stating open container laws and all concession exits, open container fines on boardwalks enforced by specials in the area, and all employees to be of legal service age and tip certified. We failed to go on to great lengths to include the coalition in the discussion regarding the policy changes and we thank them for their efforts to combat the problem of underage drinking. However, the statistics overwhelmingly show that the number one place underage kids get alcohol from is from their homes and not from local business. And we expect that in putting forth a responsible program which targets all these major causes, that the coalition and businesses and the city will work together and put out a better solution on how to go about it. You know, we appreciate what the coalition does, but we ask that the adults in the community have to punish as a result. So really what my question is, is what can we do to talk about this for you guys?
I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that, but I think that at this time, it's very difficult for us to make a position until we have all of the, all of the equal ramifications that this means. It involves the mandate of the city code that we have and it's a very serious matter. And for that reason, for that reason, it's something that we are taking very seriously. We also realize we did not make an impact that, you know, you know, commercial people like yourself and others, but it also involves the changing of the city code that is, has been on the books for many, many years.
We understand that, I mean, there's been a ton of discussion, emails, Facebook, I mean, everybody's talking about it, but last I heard it was going to be on the agenda tonight, go to here in next week and now it's not. So I was just wondering if you guys knew when and if, I mean, myself, the other concessionaires, we're happy to make ourselves available to you guys, to the whole community to talk about it, talk about all these, these proposals that we have to, to make a work for everyone.
Mr. Sullivan, we will take all this into consideration, but we at this point can't even comment on this, you know, I hope you'll understand.
Yeah.
Because we're, you know.
Because it's a change to the charter, there would be a notice publication and a hearing first.
A hearing first.
Because it would be a change to the charter, there won't be a public hearing, just like we noticed two hearings for the next meeting. So there wouldn't be that opportunity for everyone in the community to come and voice their concerns and have a big open dialogue here and I'm hopeful that we'll do that for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. But as you see, we have to be very cautious of, you know, how we respond because of the impact that it has on businesses, in fact, it has on our community and so we, we have to be very careful there and I hope you understand that.
I fully understand that, just, I feel like we've been talking about it for a long time, but now with you guys who know the most important people talking about it. So I, I just wanted to get it on the record that, that we're asking it to be on the agenda for the next election.
Then we'll be taking into consideration.
And we'll make ourselves available to whoever wants to talk about it.
Okay.
All right, thanks a lot.
Good to see you, thank you.
Appreciate it, yes.
Thank you again. Our next person is a very good friend, Mr. Jamie Lynch. Welcome, Jamie, and also Jamie's a neighbor and, you know, we live alongside each other and one on June, the other one on May 1st and certainly we enjoy each other as, as we stay, we're welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Council, Happy New Year. I am representing the chair of Congress tonight. As you know, there's been much dialogue about this, about this situation, this idea to be placed on the city calendar. I understand there are legal ramifications that you're working through, but regardless, fully understanding, when the RFPs went out, the city wanted something a little bit different. They didn't want your basic concessionaire hot dogs and hamburgers. These folks created something very nice on the boardwalk and, and they followed through. This is not the average concessionaire, they have exotic foods, a very nice setup, they invested, they allowed some of them lifesavers. So I understand and the chance is here to represent them in the fact that they, they need their representation and they need their voices heard. At the council meeting, well, they're asking if you put this item up on the agenda for discussion. We're not asking you to take a stand on it, but at least have their voice heard. It's something that was originally to be part of their RFP and it was pulled back. Well, they've made that replacement and I think this is something that will complement it. As you've heard from Sean, you've gotten the, the emails and the letters, this is something that's probably one of the most conservative things that you'll see with regards to an SLA license and that they're willing to build into their contract and the city being partners with them would have every right to pull back their license with regards to operating within the city, not the SLA license, if they, if they fall outside the bounds of that. So what we're asking is that the city put this on the calendar, let them have their word. I think you'll see from the community, as it was in your, in your public sessions, people want to see, people want to see some Congress on the boardwalk and this will enhance their businesses. Put the campaign forward unless you act and hear what they have to say. Now, there's an activist going out from the Metta Long Beach Aware and they've, they've chosen to take a stand and publicly oppose us and they've started a campaign and that's well and fine, except the problem here is that they pick and choose what fights they want to have and that's not fair to these concessionaires. Many businesses have opened, posting on, on Beach Street, on Park Avenue and more are applying as we speak. So that's not fair to them to be targeted and the city shouldn't let that weigh on their decisions of whether this comes forward for a, for discussion. So we ask that the city put this on the calendar, announce it so that everybody can come out and speak about it. We're not asking you to let, let the public hear what they have to say, let them present their case. And I think you'll see that the, the vote for it will be an easy one. So I appreciate the, in taking those thoughts and, and put that forward, get it on the calendar as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, thank you and certainly we will take all that into consideration and I, and I appreciate it again and I have to commend you for being the voice of, of our town that we hold very dear to us. The business meeting is extremely, extremely important to the vitality of Long Beach and we commend you for being that person. Thank you, Jamie, thank you. We're not falling behind. I have also a next person, Mr. Greg Lapenna. Greg?
I think I'll pass.
You can pass, okay, Greg, thank you for being here.
Thank you, so glad to get here.
We have also in the audience, Mr. Hodge, James Hodge. James, good to see you too, good to see you again.
Good.
Welcome, James.
Welcome, how you doing?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Greetings on this rainy day, but I thank all of you, James, I was 95 minutes from the street, ready here in the city of Long Beach. I, I'm, speak, well, I want to thank you first for Martin Luther King Center and coming to support the march and commemorate the march, Martin Luther King march, when he was here and the program, one of the videos that's on social media has already over 4,000 views and a lot of calls, our keynote speaker was outstanding and thank you for the program here, Nissa and the council and the community developer funds that helped out, that told us by the community developer, Martin Sherry James. So again, I thank you for that. Now speaking of my individual capacity as a tax man resident, I would just like to, again, reinforce for the veteran that's trying to get the handicap. My brother was a 31-year in the Marines, retired as on recon force and anything that I hear about veterans, I always try to support if I can financially or whatever, but again, just to hear that they've been trying to just get some kind of handicap assistance or help, it should not take that long and I thank God for, again, their service. So please, somebody just pay for that, that. Another thing is, I come with saying that all of the candidates may be wonderful, right? And I'm not staunch Democrat, I'm not stuck on a political party, but I love people that will help people. And I come, I come speaking loud and clear on behalf of James Hodge, but I come with the energy and the blessings of my union president to say that with over 800 members throughout the national county, about 200 members and 400 family members in the city of Long Beach, we're, we're behind Margaret Moore. All of the other candidates may be wonderful, but Margaret Moore is a second generation CSEA and she's already a CSEA, her family member is CSEA and CSEA is standing behind someone that they've worked with on numerous projects and different things. I've worked with them in my personal individual capacity as a resident, I'll go back to that head. I'm the vice political chair of the CSEA, so I have my blessings, thank you, John, and all of those that are watching, CSEA is watching us and they're out there, we're out there and we're both strong. But I say to all of us, what inspiration is that for 23-year-old to have opportunity to be appointed as city councilor? What great opportunity, I think, yeah, there's a lot of calls coming from the county, a call from all over and it's wonderful, but I have never really been as much as excited as I am now for the leadership that you hold. We have a national figure here that's represented not just in Long Beach, but all over the country, I'm finished, sorry, that's represented all over the country. I don't know what the city council will do, but I just know that the community and the city and everybody who's looking, he's worked for the Bay now, he's worked for a senator, it's enjoying it and that's powerful. And I thank you in advance for whatever you may do, but I, I just want to sit down, I want to let the city council know who I'm behind. No, thank you very much, city council letting me speak, but thank you, okay. So then to the president and to the council, I am totally supporting Margaret Moore and I will vote 100% if I work for all of you, I will do double for him. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, James, thank you. And thank you, and thank you for those kind words.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Mr. Hodge, on MLK Day yesterday and the march. Thank you for your leadership yesterday, it was a wonderful program and once again, it was really an honor once again to see Travis Nelson, I've had an opportunity to hear him speak previously and to hear him, to have him come to the MLK Center yesterday, I think it was really important for our young people so that they could be encouraged by his words, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, thank you, James. Our next person is someone that I probably need to know and that's Ms. Vera Furey. Vera, or Vera? Vera. It's probably the way I see the letters and maybe in classes. Ms. Furey, pleasure, pleasure, meet you, ma'am, and welcome to city council.
How are you guys?
Yes, we have, you see, I think they have classes, 300. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Okay, so.
Okay, so I just wanna put on record, I sent out an email last week to the council copying City Associations' goal. Although I won't speak on their behalf, it has been discussed, and there is willingness. So I'd just like to read the email that I sent, as I know you'll only see it already. Just wanted to follow up to see where the Comprehensive Plan stands. I understand that there's a movement to adopt the plan. As discussed with Coach Patty Horn and Jack Hammond at the city council meeting and at the Q and A session at the MLK Center, we had asked if additional Q and A sessions be held with the public in all areas, all other areas of the city. It is more important now, since it appears we have made some amendments after some community feedback. While the sessions you held at the library had some representation, we did not offer the more in-depth opportunities to those who attended and for the public at large to get a project actually more fully presented. The Q and A sessions offered the public a more fitting environment and one that allows them to ask and hear other's thoughts about the plan in the open. I urge you to reconsider doing such before going into the next phase... Going to next phase, excuse me. There are many people who are still, who were and are still unaware of the scope of this project in the city. I would hate to see this project, this much work going to a project of this magnitude only to be potentially contested at a later date. As we said, we are available to discuss. I'm also happy to reach out to our local civic associations to gauge their interest in this, if this may be a generated facility of all of this happening. I've not heard facts, but this would be an opportunity this evening to address the Comprehensive Plan and the idea of community sessions before you even go into the next step of the Toro zoning review.
Of course, thank you. But it's my understanding that a public session is being planned. I guess that this is something you've had, Ms. Fiore, do you'd like to kind of clarify that for us?
Welcome, Ms. Horn. I'm glad you're here tonight. And as you see, there are questions in good practice. These are values that we hold too, Ms. Fiore, that we believe in. Maybe you can just give us a little update on where we are with the Comprehensive Plan?
Yes, we are planning a meeting, as Councilwoman Moore mentioned, for the civics and others. In terms of, we have public meeting. And as soon as we have a date, which we should have the next day or two, we need to secure a location. We will start announcing it and invite everyone to come so that we can talk about the plan and provide information on the updates that were done based upon input that we got from the community at the main meetings we've had over the last two years.
Okay. Ms. Fiore, you know, we welcome, again, that you come to City Council and you let... Because I think this is part of public information, to come here and to share with us and to bring this more to the surface so that people can hear and know and be well-informed, like we did with the boardwalk, where we included different parts of the city, people, and it was a survey, and it was a decision that we collectively put together before we moved ahead and got the boardwalk that we have today. And again, we promise that is part of what we do and what we will do. Ms. Fiore? Good pleasure to meet you too. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sure I'll see you.
Yes, yes. Glad you're here tonight. Folks, thank you for coming out tonight. We hope it's cooperating, but please be careful going home. And again, we thank you for coming out. And again, we wish for a board back here for meeting all of us. Commander, good to see you.
Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? You on vacation?